Good evening and welcome to our final In Focus Candidate Forum here on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director. Very happy that you've joined us for this last In Focus Candidate Forum as we'll take a look at the two candidates running for Wayne County Council District III. We'll talk to them coming up in just a few minutes. The In Focus Candidate Forums have been made possible through a partnership between WGTV and the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, and we greatly appreciate their support and the effort that they've put into us. We're not completely done because we will be here again on election night, giving you a chance to talk to some of the candidates maybe that you have not heard from, those that have been in uncontested races. Again, we just want you to know that what we've gone through here, and even Tuesday night in Cambridge City, were all contested races. In the fall, we'll be back and we'll have, we'll narrow it down to two or three people, depending on who gets into the race. A couple of things that we want to remind you of, the registering to vote obviously is over and the voting has begun. Early voting at the voter registration office is available now through May 7th. Voter Registration Office on the second floor of the Wayne County Courthouse, 301 East Main Street. Hours, 8:30 to 5:00 Mondays, also Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, April 28th and May 5th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and on May 7th, 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. If you have a question, you can give a call to the number there on the screen, 973-9304. Primary voting at the vote centers begins on Monday, April 30th, and continues through May 4th, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Locations are there on the screen, Coleman Center, Golei Center, First English Lutheran Church, Hagerstown New Testament Church, and once again, the Coleman Center will be open on April 28th and May 5th from 10 until 3:00. And then again, on Election Day, if you want to wait that long, Tuesday, May 8th, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The normal places, Coleman Center, Golei Center, Fountain City Wesleyan Church, First English Lutheran Church, First Baptist Church, Hagerstown New Testament Church, Centerville Christian Church, Family Center, all of those addresses are there on the screen. The one we really want to point out, Mount Olive Baptist Church, 1108 North H Street, is taking the place of Townsend Community Center. So if you're used to voting at Townsend Community Center, please be aware that that location will not be open this year. That vote center has just moved down the street slightly to Mount Olive Baptist Church. And we got a press release, I meant to mention this a week ago when it came out, but just a reminder, don't steal people's signs. This came out from Richmond, the Richmond Police Department, signed by Chief Branham. They'd like to remind citizens that this is an election season, there are many candidate signs out along city streets and roadways. These signs are the property of the candidate that were purchased at the expense of each candidate, please don't remove the sign. If it's a traffic hazard, contact the candidate and they will remove it themselves. So I guess we've got signs disappearing out there, not a good thing. We'll remind you of those voting locations again at the end of the show. I mentioned that this is a partnership between WCTV and the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, kind of sitting in that chair for us this evening, Millie Martin Emery, who is with Hometown Media Group, Western Wayne News, Nettle Creek Gazette. Thanks a lot for being here.
Thank you, thanks for asking me.
You all did a very nice job on Tuesday night's Candidate Forum, putting that together. Nice turnout, all the candidates seem to be pretty enthused about it.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate all the candidates and your help and a lot of the other community partners that were part of the show, so we appreciated all that, all their help.
You're here to hear from the candidates, and tonight, we're talking to the candidates that are running for Wayne County Council District III. Seat currently held by Pete Zaleski, he has decided not to run for that office, so Mark Holsher is running, and Beth Leisure is running for that seat. Thank you both very much for spending your time with us this evening and allowing the folks to hear your thoughts on various issues. We're going to give you both a chance to kind of introduce yourself to those people who may or may not know you or may need more information about you. Mark, we're going to start with you, give you a minute and a half to two minutes, just to kind of give us a little background, whatever you want us to know.
Okay. I'd like to tell the voters that if they see fit to elect me as a county council, what they will get will be a graduate of Ball State University, a county auditor with the knowledge and background of that office, a business manager of a school corporation, a successful businessman, and the director of the Wayne County Tax Research Bureau.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, chip.
Short, sweet, and to the point. This may be a long hour. We go to Beth Leisure.
Hi, I'm Beth Leisure, and I grew up all my life in the Western Wayne area, I grew up actually in Pershing, so I feel like I can relate to all the people in my district. There are some small towns included, Abington and Boston and places like that. I've been married to my husband Rick for almost 40 years. We own four businesses together, so we are, my 20th anniversary at the Antique Mall in Cambridge City, and currently, I am the President of the Cambridge City Chamber of Commerce. We have our own chamber over there since 1948, so that's an exciting thing for me and a big part of my work that I do in Cambridge. I'm involved in the Cambridge City Main Street and the Indiana National Road Association. And then in countywide, I am the Board President for the Wayne County Convention and Tourism Bureau, and I am Cambridge's appointment to the Economic Development Corporation, and recently, County Council appointed me to the Redevelopment Commission, and they are the people who handle the TIF money in the district.
Okay, thank you both for being here, thank you for putting your name on the ballot. First question, then turn it over to Millie.
Well, tell us a little bit, as you understand the duties of the County Council seat, what would you do in terms of being in that seat?
Beth, we'll start with you.
Okay. The County Council is the fiscal body of the county, so it includes budgets for various organizations that are ran by the county, the law enforcement, Health Department, let's see, I'm trying to think what else is included. So mainly, we would, there's a, there's a long process in the fall going over budgets and making sure everything is taken care of. Oh, we also run the County Highway Department. So looking at budgets on a monthly basis, it is managing all the employees of the county, their wages and any problems with hiring and all those kind of issues, and then it is also the general finances of the county on a month-to-month basis.
Okay. Mark?
I'm going to disagree on something first. The County Council does not run the Auditor's Office or the Treasurer's Office or the Recorder's Office. That is not their job. They pass on their budgets, but it's not done in a way that they micromanage or manage those offices. Each elected official is responsible for their own office, each of them has by statute responsibilities, and so does County Council, and so do the County Commissioners. The philosophy or the theory that those offices are run by County Council or County Commissioners is not a good one. It is not, in fact, the way it ought to be, and it isn't. The officeholders that get elected are just in the same position that I would be in as a councilman. They face the same voters that I face, they receive the same votes that I would receive, and they have their own duties. If they don't get something done and they screw up, that's their problem. It's not a problem for County Council or County Commissioners.
Okay.
I just want to say, I did not mention those offices because I do know those are all mandated by state laws.
Okay. Come back to you for one more?
Well, why do you want to be in that position, to be in charge of all the budgets and some of those things?
Mark, start with you. What made you decide to get back into this?
I had been in that position before as auditor. I've lived my life through either auditor, business manager, or private business, and I just think I can make a contribution that is different from the norm for the officeholders and for that office. The council position that I'm seeking, and one of the things that I did with your newspaper was to declare that I won't serve more than two terms. I was in an office, the Auditor's Office, that had term limits, and I strongly believe in those term limits, and I believe that even though County Council doesn't have them, I can self-impose those limits on myself, and I did.
Repeat the question.
Why you want to be a council?
I'm sorry. I have a heart for the people of this county. I care about this county, I care about what happens to this county. I know the needs and the desires of the people in the small towns and even the people that live in Richmond and this part of my district. It's important to me that there's people in office who have a forward thinking and want to see the county move forward, and I have plenty of business experience my whole life. My husband and I have been entrepreneurs for over 30 years, and it's just, it's a passion of mine to see things move forward.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11, speaking with candidates running for Wayne County Council District III. We are taking your questions, 973-8587. You can send us a question via Facebook, or you can send us a tweet to @WCTVinfo. I want to go with something that the council has been dealing with. There seems to be, particularly on the council side, some issue with the separation that has taken place over the last couple of years with the Health Department, between the federally qualified health center and what we know as the public health side. Provide for us your understanding of what they're going through right now, and how can you lower the temperature between the council and the Health Department? And I think we started with you, so Beth, you start with this one.
I have not been in on those discussions, those have not been anything that I've been privy to, but I will say that, you know, there could be personnel issues that need to be resolved, probably in executive session meetings, those aren't public knowledge. But I think that things need to be looked at in the Health Department. We need to make sure that the Health Department's serving the entire county. I think there's needs that maybe aren't being met, but they are supported by federal money and they do self-sustain.
Years ago, the Wayne County Welfare Department was much, in much the same situation that the County Health Department is now. It was run by the county entity. It eventually evolved into what it is, is a federal program, and I think with watching the Health Department and the federal dollars that are coming into it, that eventually will happen with the Wayne County Health Department. They will become an entity separate from the county, the county won't have too much say in what they do, and it will be funded by the state and federal government. Good or bad, I just think that's what will happen. As far as finding a solution to the problems that you have now, if you're not willing to be tough and with the budget with them, I don't see any prospect of some of these problems being resolved. I just see the Health Department going its own way, becoming funded by somebody other than the county, and eventually will have very little response for the county, or to the, not the county, but to the County Council or County Commissioners.
Anything? The health center, the clinic as we know it, is the part that has become, I believe, federally qualified health center. The public health side, food inspection, sanitary, is still part of county government. Are you saying that those two, they need to find some way to completely separate those in administration and everything else?
I don't think that's going to happen. I think that the Health Department will be unwilling to give that portion of their authority up, and as they move on to the, being funded by somebody else, they won't need to ask the county whether they want to separate those things or not. Much like the welfare programs, they didn't come to the county and say, well, we want food stamps separate from child support and different things like that. I just don't perceive them as being anything but a separate entity altogether.
Okay. Kind of following up on the federally qualified health centers, the Wayne County Health Department has become one of those. There are at least one, if not two, that are going to be opening up in the community, not part of the Health Department, but run by someone else. Health issues in this county are something that obviously are a financial situation here. We are lower than the state average, the state is lower than the national average, so the health of our citizens is incredibly important. Should the county in some way, financially or otherwise, be helping, if asked, some of these other, or this other entity that's about to open up this federally qualified health center, so that some additional health options are available for our citizens?
What you're asking is, should the county have some say in how they're run? If they put money into it, then the county has an obligation or the right to determine how some of those things are run and funded. And I just don't see that happening with the leadership that's in the Health Department. Again...
But this is, this is the one being started, like there's another one that's opening up, 10th and South A in Richmond, that has nothing to do with the Health Department. Should that one, if it were to come forward and go, since we're going to be serving some of your citizens, should that one receive some county funding?
No.
No?
No. The County Health Department is the arm that the county funds those things through, with the, through the clinic, or through the various other things like what you're talking about, individual clinics that are formed. The obligation that the taxpayers have is what is currently there, and I don't, I don't perceive that they would want to be able to fund other programs. You could have programs that would come up, the doctors would set up in different places and put their hands out and say, we want money from the county to support these things. And I, you just have to say no.
I think that the health and safety of our residents is the most important thing, and there's probably ways to work together with those clinics if it was necessary. There could be contracts and there could be things that were set up and programs in place that would help cross over and fill the gaps. Too many people fall between the cracks of the system.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. We are taking your questions, 973-8587, via Facebook Live or @WCTVinfo. We do have some questions that came in a little while ago, if we can bring one of those up. Given Wayne County owns the land in the Gateway Industrial Park, what should the role of the county be in solving the sewer issue to help the current tenants sell the existing land and expand the park for future development? How should the park be used and developed further? This came up a little bit the other night. What should the county's role be in helping solve the sewer issues?
Well, the county owns the ground, the county is receiving the TIF money from that district, and I think it's our responsibility to our employers who have invested hundreds of millions of dollars to provide the proper wastewater disposal that, you know, that will suit the needs. There's plenty of room for growth, it's an amazing exit there, great traffic, great easy on and off, and there, it would be a wonderful place for business to expand in that area. So, right now, there is new regime in the Wayne, Western Wayne Sewer District. There is a sense of everyone wanting to work together and look at all the options in a fair way, compare apples to apples, and to come up with the best solution. And I think the county is prepared to financially help that situation down the road, which will ease some of the burden on the residents in Western Wayne that are ultimately paying the sewer bill.
I understand, what you're saying is that the county will have, should have money to fund the sewer district over in Cambridge City?
Not the entire thing, they can help, there's TIF money that will be available.
Okay.
From that, from the taxes.
But not necessarily just tax dollars?
No, no, just TIF money that's been collected from that area.
I think that's a, in watching over a period of time, back to when the previous people owned that building or operated that building, Really Cool Foods, that problem has gone on for a long time, particularly with the sewer, the pumps and all of that that had to be paid for. And the onset of that, should have been, in my estimation, could have been handled better that would have helped the situation now. Really Cool Foods should have been liable to pay for some of that stuff, and I don't think they were, they ever paid for one pump over there, and those pumps aren't cheap. So I don't know, just have to wait and see how this works out, and these people are willing, if they are willing to settle this thing and get a good dialogue going, I think that's good. If they're not, I don't know what the outcome will be.
Does the county have a financial stake in helping come to a solution?
I don't know how you would do that, other than if, and that's why my question here was that, are you, are we saying we're going to put money into that situation? Are we going to try to build a sewer system over there that's adequate? Do we want to build a sewer system in Fountain City that is adequate? I don't know that we have the money or the resources to do those things, and I don't know that they should do those things. You've got an entity, the Sewer District, that people pay a tax to, and the usage of that sewer district, and I think that those, some of those things need to be worked out as their problem in dealing with the solution of it, and not turning to somebody else for money. It always seems like money becomes the issue, and sometimes it does, but there has to be a road that gets you there, and I think we haven't gone down that road yet. We don't know what's requested, and we don't know what's going to happen with being able to take the funds that are in that sewer district and solve some of those problems rather than passing them on to somebody else.
Next question.
Well, I want to hop back to the Health Department just for a minute and see, based on the earlier discussion, do you think the Health Department needs to offer clinic services in locations outside of Richmond, or do you see a need to make transportation services more widely available to help people from Dublin or Cambridge or Milton be able to get to Richmond for the clinic?
That's what I was referring to when I said, better coverage of the entire county. Sometimes people clear over in Cambridge, Dublin, even the other outlying areas, they don't have vehicles, they don't have gas money, so it becomes a hardship for them to try to get to Richmond. We take advantage that we can just go back and forth so easily, but that's, most of the people who would use the clinic do not have that luxury.
I can see that where that's a problem, that people that, in the outlying areas, can't take advantage of those clinics, but, you know, Reed Hospital has many hospitals all over this county, and they have them in various other places besides Wayne County. And I think that maybe some of those problems where somebody can't receive service need to be worked out with Reed Hospital. You know, the county, and I don't know what the amount they put in now, but the county puts a lot, used to put a lot of money into Reed Hospital through a yearly donation of taxpayer dollars, and there's been an argument on whether that should continue, there's been an argument whether they should put any money into Reed Hospital, and if we're going to have satellites through Reed Hospital, and the county is putting money within to Reed Hospital, maybe some of that time and building space should be donated or used to help people like in Cambridge City, that's a, that's a long drive to get here to Richmond and seek help. Now, Hagerstown has one of their satellites out there on One, and if Reed's, and it is, I'm not questioning their ability, but they are a community hospital, and they, that's the promotion of it, and that's the way everybody in the community accepts it. Those things, those buildings and those spaces, I think, could be used to help people that can't get into Richmond or wherever they need to be. They've got the old Clarkson Building down toward Liberty, that's a Reed Hospital building. You've got one over on One in Hagerstown. Those facilities are closer, and maybe those things need to be used more by the, by the community they're in, rather than trying to get clear into Richmond to see a clinic or a community health center here in Richmond.
Can we follow up?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum, we have more questions coming in, so we're going to go back to our next chat question that has come in so far. As you know, the Sheriff's Department has had a high turnover rate in the past few years. How would purpose to increase the pay of the department to help them be more competitive with other sized departments? And pay within the Sheriff's Department has been discussed for a while. There has been some bump recently through the County Council. I know they are still looking at some of the other departments, but as far as you know, from a budgeting standpoint, should more money be put in? As we know, police officers, we're not getting as many in any place, Richmond or any place, and they're going to where they can get higher wages. Do we need to make our enforcement division and our jail more competitive?
I don't know what the situation is in comparing it to other counties. I couldn't tell you whether a sheriff deputy on the road in this county is paid more or less than another county. As a councilman, I'd like to see every department have more money, and that's not going to happen. I think in working with the incoming sheriff, I think there are lots of things that could be done within their budget that might help free up some funds that would allow the sheriff to determine where some of those monies go, instead of the council deciding where those monies go. You have budgets that are already established, and the sheriff can come back to council and say, I want to shift money from here to here, and having no effect on the bottom line of the budget. So I think that if those things occur, and I can, I've talked to one of the candidates for sheriff, one of the things that I would like, would hope that I could do as a councilman is be able to look at a budget, like the sheriff's or the Health Department or the Auditor's Office, and work with them to do a, not do a better job, but do it differently. For example, and I brought it up the other night, and I don't know whether it's even a good one or not, but I think it'll all be discussed. The Sheriff's Department has two full-time doctors on their, in their budget. Wayne County Health Department has ads on billboards, we want more people to come and visit us, and we have the facilities to handle more people. And maybe they ought to look at taking the doctors that are in the Health Department, and nurses, and let them go to the jail and cover those patients that need care, and eliminate those two jobs for the doctors. That would free up $300,000 or $400,000. And those kinds of things, I think, need to be at least discussed before we decide whether we're going to just take $100,000 and then pump more money into the Sheriff's Department, or the Health Department, or any other department. I think that, let's take a look at the money we're spending now and try to do a better job of spending what we have prior to saying, if you, if you turn around and you give them an additional $100,000, and you increase the total county's budget by $100,000, how, where are you going to get that money? You going to cut some other department that thinks they're just as important as the Sheriff's Department? Or you going, you going to raise taxes? You don't have that ability. You have to be able to look at the other departments and shift the money. The total amount of money is determined now, how are you going to spend it?
I feel like there are ways to look at the budgets and leverage our dollars in the wisest way that we can. I do feel like law enforcement is one of the top priorities in our county that is funded by the county government. We, our wages are under what many other counties are. They have made a little bit of headway and some raises, and they're doing what they can right now in the current year's budget that we're in, but if we're going to be competitive in attracting new law enforcement to our county, those wages are going to have to come up. Also... Also, in retaining the officers that we have. We've lost several officers to retirement, and it's very hard to recruit new people to come in. And I think one of the things Randy Redder had talked about was maybe recruiting at a younger age and get these people more interested in law enforcement. That's not a glamorous job to be on. They put their lives on the line every day, and providing them with the proper equipment, the cameras, the body cameras, the car cameras, those things are essential, and we are going to have to find a way to fund those things.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11, talking with candidates for Wayne County Council, District Three, Mark Holsher, Beth Leisure. Sitting in with me this evening from Hometown Media Group is Millie Martin Emery. Thanks for being here. We're going to get you the next question following this chat question. So, what do we have up next? Do you approve of the partnership with the city of Richmond to tear down the old Reed Hospital? The county put money in, Reed Health put some money in, city put some money in, and the building has started to come down. If you've driven by there, as I understand it, the county really doesn't have any ownership in the land once it's sold. Was it a good deal? What do you think of that?
Everything's not always a good deal, but it's a necessary deal. That property had to get taken care of. It's a, it's a good example of all the different entities in the county working together to solve an issue that was just out of control, and there wasn't a good answer to it, but it is getting taken care of, so that's a good thing.
Interesting response. Okay. The county has put money into that facility to tear it down. The only thing that I would say with it was, when the ground or whatever's left is finally sold, the county should have been in a position where they should have been able to recoup some of the funds that were put into that teardown. I don't, I don't know that just taking the building and tearing it down and selling it should have involved those people that, or those entities that put money into it. If Reed put money into it, and the county has money into it, and the bank has money in it, or whoever, or the people that have the money in it. When the, when the property's eventually sold, the business part of it should have been, if there were funds greater than the original teardown costs, the county should have been in a position to get some of those funds that we spent refunded to us. That would have been, that's what I would do as a businessman, and I just think that those kind of things should have been done, but they weren't. So hopefully, the land will eventually be developed into something that will pay taxes, and everybody can say, "Well, we're getting some money back through the tax, tax system."
Millie?
Well, I want to talk a little bit about the boundaries of the district that you're running for, and how you plan to reach the wide range of geographic areas, wide range of constituents that you would be helping in your role on the council.
And we say District Three, and she's right, it does span a wide area, and I think Ryan has a map that he's going to pull up, hopefully, that will actually show that. But while he's bringing that up, Beth, I think you start on this one.
Okay. Well, fortunately, I'm from the western Wayne area, and that includes a large part of the district, and I do know most of, you know, the people and what's going over there. It is very odd that it goes clear from Abington to Boston, all the way to the state line. That's such a far reach, but it's tricky. There, there's no little town councils to visit and talk with people and meet people. There are volunteer fire departments, and I love my firemen, so I plan on starting with those groups to, you know, talk with them and see what they're doing and what their needs are, and use that way to get into those smaller communities, because it's tough for little towns. They don't, they don't have businesses left hardly at all, and so they want to know that somebody cares, and somebody will at least listen to them.
Representation, basically, is what we're talking about. How do you let the constituents know?
I don't think that there should be any doubt on my ability to represent the taxpayers and the voters of the third district. In fact, I think if you look at that district, it goes from one side of the county clear to the other side of the county. There are councilmen on County Council that represent the entire county. There are commissioners that represent the entire, the entire county. So I think it's a problem, but I don't think it's not insurmountable. You have to be able to communicate with the people that you represent, and whether it's a council commissioner, it doesn't make any difference to me. You still have to be able to communicate with those people, and they have to feel free to give you a call when they need something. Those problems exist for the Danny Burns or Kenny Paust or Butters, and they deal with it. And I don't see any, any reason why one district and county council. But I will say, it is a long drive from where I live, to Cambridge City, to visit over there. And back to the part about the people that use the health clinic, that's a long drive, and I can understand that. But those are things we just deal with as, as living in the country and having, and having a county council member that also lives in the country.
And you saw that map come up on the screen, the lower third almost of that, that pink area is the district. So yes, you're, you're traveling literally from one side of the county to the other as you, as you try to deal with all of your constituents. County government is currently spending millions of dollars, literally, to bring facilities from the jail to the fairgrounds up to date and up to code. Talk to us about your philosophy of, about how government should be using taxpayer dollars to take care of and adequately fund the maintenance of particularly their buildings. And there are multiple buildings, obviously, throughout the county. Obviously, we're in and out of the Annex Building, and a lot of people are, people are in and out of the courthouse, people are in and out of the jail, but then you start talking about the highway department buildings, the fairgrounds, things of that nature. How does that get allocated on a regular basis so we don't end up with two or three years of incredible bills like what we have right now?
Well, I think, you know, the county has and owns lots of property. The jail, the county commissioners are responsible for the county jail. The highway department, that's a different fund, they're responsible for the, for their buildings, equipment, and all, and their personnel. You're obligated to take care of those things the best that you can take care of. That's one of the obligations the county government does have toward its property. The courthouse and the administration building, all the, you know, all of them require large amounts of money to maintain. There was some discussion, I think, in way back, not way back, but in February, March, the county commissioners were looking at renovation of the grounds of the county courthouse, and there was a discussion of whether they should borrow the money, or should they spend the eight or $900,000 that it would take to do that from monies that they had on hand. And I believe I ran an ad in the, in your newspaper that said, "Don't borrow the money, use the money that you have on hand." You know, in my family and in my business, if I didn't have sufficient funds, sometimes I just didn't get certain things done the way I wanted to do them that, in that time. I'm a, don't, don't like the idea of borrowing money to fix maintenance problems. The maintenance problem should be fixed from budgets as they exist now. And I think they are, I think the maintenance problem, I see work on the courthouse, and I see work on the administration building. Those are just day-to-day problems and day-to-day budget issues that I face at home, I face, faced in my business, and I think the county faces also. You just, you have to deal with them, and you have to be able to solve them. But you have to have the personnel, particularly in the maintenance of the courthouse, you have to have the personnel that can do, do the job and get the job done in a way that isn't exceedingly expensive.
First of all, I believe that we need a better plan for the county. There needs to be these things thought of before they, long before they come up, and, you know, they don't just pop up. There's emergencies. But they do a really good job of budgeting for that stuff and doing a few things each year, and it's paid for out of the general budget, all the things that they're doing. When you have a big capital expenditure, in our own lives, I mean, if I wanted to buy a $300 house or needed to, I don't have that in my reserves, but that's when I get a mortgage and I pay it back. That's similar to what they do with bonds in the county. Sometimes it's necessary, but hopefully, they won't have to borrow money just to do. I don't see them borrowing money just for day-to-day upkeep and things like that.
Speaking with candidates for Wayne County Council, District Three, Beth Leisure, Mark Holsher, joined by Millie Martin Emery from Hometown Media. We have another chat question. We want to try to get as many of those in as we possibly can. So the next question up is, what taxes do you want to reduce in Wayne County? What taxes do you want to reduce in Wayne County? Beth, I think we start with you.
Okay. It's been advertised by Mr. Holsher that I'm for new taxes, and we've never had a conversation about that, and I would just like to speak for myself and not someone else speaking for me. The bond on the jail will be coming off in a couple years, and, you know, it's, budgets are tied, and the county only gets paid twice a year, and they have to do what they can with that money. But they, I think when the jail bond comes off, that will give us a little bit of leverage to even reduce some tax. That's a payroll tax, basically, what's on the jail bond. So I think there's a way to still keep some of that money, but, but still be able to do a little bit of reduction there in the future.
I think that, in going back to our discussion Tuesday night over in Cambridge City, that one of the issues, I'd like to see all taxes. Let's be honest about it, I don't like paying taxes unless I get, I'm sure I'm getting what I'm paying for. I hate to see my money wasted, no matter what it is. But the thing I think you're alluding to was the food and beverage tax. And in discussing, in looking at what was said Tuesday, it was my understanding you supported that tax. I'm going to tell you that I opposed the wheel tax at the time it was discussed. It wasn't necessary. I can show you that Wayne County Highway Department currently has more money than it had when that wheel tax was being discussed. I am sure that County Council would, and that's who votes on these different taxes, County Council would not rescind that tax, even if they had enough money to fund that department. And the roads aren't going to hell, the things are still, are still being taken care of, and that tax was not necessary. And the citizens of the county filled that commissioner's room and that council room and convinced council they didn't need that tax. Now, so we now have another try and another tax, and that's the food and beverage tax. And under the same synopsis, I oppose that tax as being unnecessary. I don't see a need for it. Taxes should be a last resort, not a, not a first resort. And the tax of food and beverage, the comment that Tuesday night was, "Well, people outside the county will be funding this thing because they'll come here and eat." Don't kid yourself. If Wayne County residents are going to pay that tax, you're not going to be exempted from paying that tax because you live in Wayne County. And I think that we need to do a better job, before we start imposing taxes, we need to do a better job of spending the money we have, back to what I said before, that we currently have. The tax that is being discussed is not one that I would, that I would vote for. And if I'm elected to County Council, I'm not going to vote for that tax, if it does come up. She will, she said she would.
No, I have not.
Okay. If, if, if it comes up, I'm not going to vote for it. I'll tell you right now. I'm going to let the voters decide on my position of, as a councilman, prior to the election, and then they can vote for however they want to vote on that, that particular issue. I hope that the position I take with, another thing that that, that issue shows is how I would operate as a councilman, not just on that tax, but how I would operate as a councilman with all funds of taxpayers. It will also show how my opponent would operate the tax and spend attitude that she has toward county government. I don't have that attitude. I have the attitude, "You spend what you have better," and I would not vote for that tax.
I believe the question was what tax we would cut. Food and beverage tax has been discussed. I know a lot about it because I am on boards that talk about it. Food and beverage tax is not an issue in this election at all. It is not before County Council right now, and if it is brought up this year, whoever gets elected would not even have a chance to even have a say in that. I strongly believe you have to get the support of the voters, and I am more than willing to listen to everyone's opinion. People need to be educated on what's out there and make their own decisions.
Okay. Millie?
Well, let's go back to the Sheriff's Department for a minute. If the sheriff came to you and asked for various priorities, I guess, let's talk about what you think maybe would be more high priorities, whether that would be another dare officer, adding another deputy to the county drug task force, more safety equipment, body cameras, maybe some programs to help reduce repeat offenders while they're, work with people while they're in the jail to try to help prevent, prevent them from getting in trouble again. Do you have any priorities, I guess, in mind for how the Sheriff's Department should spend some of their money or any extra money that you would allocate for, for that department?
Mark, you start this one.
Back to what I said, starting out, county councilman, and I would not, I would not try to run the Sheriff's Department. You've got an elected official to do that. If the sheriff would come to County Council and said, "I need to move funds from this category to this category," I can understand that. The, that's his prerogative as the elected official. If he's incorrect, then he'll pay the penalty for it with the taxpayers. If he's right, then he'll have a better-running department. And as far as just giving more money to any department, you've got to remember, if you give more money to one department, you've got to be able to come up with where that money's going to come from. And I know that this is an important issue. I know that we have to have a good Sheriff's Department, and we have to be able to fund You have to be able to work with the sheriff and, and within his budget, and determine if money that's being spent in one place is really necessary to be spent. And if we're spending money over here, and you have an option of buying a car or a computer for the car, or the body cameras, you prioritize, just like at home. You pick the things that are more important, and you pay for those things. And if, if you don't have enough money to buy food and you go to a Colts football game, then shame on you. And it's, those are the kind of issues, I think, but I think that the elected officials in this county do a good job. They are the ones responsible for their office, not County Council or County Commissioners, and you have to rely on that, and you have to give them some space to be able to come to you and say, "Hey, I need to do this with, with more money," or move things around. You have to trust your elected officials. They're the ones that legally have the obligation. Right now, in the County Auditor's Office, and I don't use this as an example, somebody quits, and the County Auditor, for whatever reason, County Commissioners say, "We'll write the payroll for the county." Not their job. That's the job of the County Auditor. And the, just shifting those duties from one office to another is not, not a good thing. If, if the money's not available in the auditor's budget, but is available in the commissioner's budget, the commissioners and council should sit down with the auditor, transfer, get the funds over to the auditor's office, let them perform their duties as required by law. And I don't, I just don't like the idea of the council, and I don't think they have that necessarily. And I know I wouldn't, having been an elected official and dealt with County Commissioners and County Council with my budget. They are elected, just like the County Councils are, they have their responsibility. They are elected, just like the county councils are, they have their responsibilities and they are, I am no better than they are or no worse than they are.
And I agree that these people who get elected, these positions are elected by the people because they feel like that's their best candidate to run those offices and they do need to be the ones who are in charge of those offices. Your direct question about the sheriff's department, I urge everybody to take a good look at the candidates. It's, it's important who they put in office in these, these things. This is serious business. They're handling a lot of money and it's, it's very important that that's not just a popularity contest about somebody you know, no races. And it, but it's about who you think will have your best interests and who will handle the funds properly.
Okay.
There are consequences to elections and you're right. People think, well, I know that guy, he's a nice guy, so that's who I'm going to vote for. That's not necessarily what produces good government. The consequence of our election could be the outcome of a food and beverage tax. The consequence of the, of the sheriff's department could be more, more emphasis on patrol cars and less emphasis on something else. That's up to the, those, those guys that get elected to work out. But there are consequences to these elections. And the voter turnout of what we have had recently and in the past is not a good indication that people are having a say in, in what they really want to have done in the county. And I urge all those people, if you have an interest in anything in, in the county roads, taxes, whatever, if you don't vote, don't gripe about it. It's, it's amazing to me, I've always voted, never missed a voting in my life, but it's amazing that people will sit there and not vote. I ran for, just quickly.
Hold on, before, before you do that, do you need to jump in here? Because we're probably down to our last six minutes or so.
Okay. I had run for an office, county council.
We've lost track of the question that was actually on the table and that was.
And that was, we were still dealing with the question of sheriff's prioritizing. Before we get out of here, I know we're down to it, I've got one more I want to try to throw out there. Beth, you actually end up getting this first. For years, Wayne County has partnered with the Economic Development Corporation in providing funds for that organization. Do you think the county's contract with the EDC should continue? And if so, in the same format or with changes? With regards to any funds provided by EDC, how much control should county assert in managing EDC funds or expenditures?
That's a lot. Our EDC does an excellent job. There are things that are very important in our county right now, like declining population and attraction and retention of businesses, residents, our school, our kids when they're getting out of schools and our higher education are vital. And we have to do things that are going to keep people here and bring people here. That does not mean that I'm for all kinds of spending or new taxes or things to make that happen. I think that the current way that we're operating with the regime we have now in EDC is working out very well.
I think if the county is going to continue to put money in the EDC, the county has the right to determine what is a necessary expenditure of that money. Once it goes to the EDC, I don't think that they ought to be buying $15,000 desks as occurred in the past and not necessarily now. But I think if the county taxpayers have money in, in there, then they have a right to determine what happens to that money. I don't know that, I just don't see, if somebody gives me money, I think they have the right to determine how I might spend that money. And I think the same thing would be with the EDC.
The EDC is totally funded by the edit money. They're one of the only EDCs around that is. And I know there were problems in the past, but there is a very good regime in place and the county does scrutinize their budget every year and they present it to the county and they're doing a great job with it.
Okay. We are under four minutes. See, that hour, as long as you thought it was going to be. Thank you both very much for being here, Mark Holsher, Beth Leisure, both candidates for Wayne County Council District 3. And thank you also to Millie Martin Emery with Hometown Media Group, Western Wayne News, Nettle Creek Gazette. Thank you for joining us this evening and a sitting in on the, the council side of things for us. Want to remind you that voting for all of the offices can actually be taking place right now, early voting at the voter registration office in the Wayne County Courthouse, second floor is available to you, Mondays, 8:30 to 5:00, Tuesdays, 8:30 till 4:30 and, Tuesday through Friday, excuse me, 8:30 to 4:30. And on April 28th and May 5th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On May 7th, from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. And we do, we do actually believe in, in what Mark is saying. We do need to increase voter turnout and we hope that you will take the time to learn about the candidates. There are a number of forums. We have these candidate forums on our video and demand site, as well as on our Facebook page. Go back, take a look, listen to what the candidates had to say. Early voting at vote centers, April 30th through May 4th, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You see the locations there, Coleman Center, Golei Center, First English Lutheran Church, Hagerstown New Testament Church, and the Coleman Center. If you need information, 973-9304. And then on Election Day, May 8th, those locations, along with a couple of additionals. And again, want to point out, Mount Olive Baptist Church, 1108 North H Street is the additional location or the location that will take the place of Townsend Community Center. And once again, a reminder from the Richmond Police Department, leave the signs alone.
I don't have signs out, so I don't have that problem.
No signs out, okay. There you go. You believe in that no sign thing, huh?
Yep.
I want to remind you that employment, if you're looking for it, want to get some skills, Manufacturing Matters Production Associate Training Program recruiting is now going on for May 7th through June 7th classes. Those classes will take place at McDaniel Hall. You can find out more information, manufacturingmatters.info. Also, there's a prescription drug takeback day this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Richmond Police Department, 50 North 5th Street. Free, anonymous, no questions asked, drop off of expired, unused, or unwanted prescription drugs, a safe way to get rid of those. It was put on hold previously because the weather didn't cooperate, but the sun was shining and the temperatures were warming up, so Middle Fork Reservoir opening day is scheduled for this Saturday, 2:00 to 4:00 on Sylvan Drive. Go out and enjoy that. The 25th Annual Ivy Tech Cruisin' for Scholars Car Show is also taking place this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also going on this Saturday, Harlem Wizards, a chance for you to support the Crestdale Elementary, Charles Elementary, and Vale Elementary PTOs. Doors open at 5:00 PM. Tickets will be available at the doors. The 12th Annual All Wayne County High School Art Exhibition taking place April 29th through May 19th. And you can find that and other information on our community and education bulletin boards. Need to thank the candidates, need to thank Millie for being here, want to thank Steve Michael for being part of this. I want to thank the staff that has been a part of this, especially the guy that is in my ear, Ryan Harris, who has helped get us through this. We are taking next week off. We'll be back with the mayor on the 17th, but we'll also be here election night, beginning at 6:00 PM. If you want to see this or any of our other Infocus Candidate Forums, check out WGTV online at wgtv.vibit.com or take a look at our Facebook page. Thank you very much for watching tonight's Infocus Candidate Forum. Get out and vote.